Moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Say aye. Oppose, none. We will go into executive session and report back here at plus or minus 6:30. Thank you very much. We'll see you then.
Select Board Meeting of October 17th, 2022. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing so we can honor our veterans, both past and present. Please be seated. Okay, we have signed the warrant and we are open up with a hearing to relocate one poll for service on 25 Ashley Street.
Okay, actually.
We need the.
We need the N-Star first. All right, sorry. We should say Eversource.
Eversource, right.
Yes, can't remember, can't forget that. Eversource.
Okay, I'm going to call, this is a, this is. This is a public hearing. I am going to call it to order and the purpose of the hearing and reading the hearing notice aloud. Do you do that, Forrest?
I certainly can. Good evening, members of the Board, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for having me this evening. Jessica Elder, Eversource. Eversource is proposing to relocate a poll that is existing on Ashley Street. And we're going four feet away from its existing location towards Roger Street. This is for work being done at 25 Ashley Street with a customer. It's pretty simple.
Okay, any questions from the, from the Board? Next, we have, any questions from the, anyone in the public? Any comments? Less said, the better could be the word of the day.
He's the electric guy.
Okay, anyone here in the public who is in favor of the project want to speak? Anyone here who is against the project who would like to come up and speak? Having heard none, we're going to close the public hearing. And we need a motion.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close, thank you. Roll call?
No.
Okay, all in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, public hearing is over.
Make a motion that we approve the application.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, hearing none. The Ashley Street poll is on its way. You going over there now? Okay, are we all set?
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Okay.
Be careful out there.
That was one of our best public hearings. Okay, we have a, we had a Dobbs Preserve Regulatory Agreement signing tonight, but that has been postponed due to illness to the parties involved. So that will be continued until hopefully the next meeting. Now, next would be the appointment to the DCTV Board, School Representative Jonathan Galishar.
Oh, I'm going to make that motion. We definitely need Jonathan on that committee.
For sure.
Yeah, if it's not for his knowledge, it's also for the voice.
Yeah, that's right. I'll second that.
Any comments or questions before we?
Just for the, just a clarification on that, the voice, when I say Jonathan Galishar is on the voice of the school department calls to your house. And when you hear something, an announcement from the school department, it's usually him.
You getting calls because you're late for school?
No, no, I get calls because of my granddaughter, so.
Okay, okay, good. All right.
Wanted to be here, so I'm not sure where he is, but.
That's okay.
Should we wait? We shouldn't wait?
This is a no-brainer.
No-brainer, no question, but if he comes in, we'll still have the sale of something if he makes it, how's that? Okay. All in, any discussion of questions? All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none, passes, five zero. I will mention at this point, there's four of us up here. Mr. Gracie is on Zoom and he is voting from the little screen in front of us, so Mr. Gracie is participating. Okay, we have an all-star that just came in from the town clerk's office. Good timing.
Thanks. I took a break from mailing out ballots to be here. So I'm here before you today with our warrant for the November 8th election, so I'm hoping I can get approval from the Board and we'll be able to post the warrant tomorrow.
Think we're on time, huh?
It's on the packet.
Are the, I don't know how I'm going to put this. The non-student population of Precinct Three.
Yes.
Are they going to be informed of the change of?
Are they going to be informed of the change of the voting?
They've already been informed. So on September sixth during the primary, every voter at three was provided with a postcard about the change. And then every voter, including students and non-students in three, were sent a postcard in the mail if they're registered to vote. It's on the secretary's website, it's on our website, um, and.
Get it on DCTV's.
So they've been informed of it, yes, and I'll send it out again. Once we have the early voting schedule, I'll put a note on there also. That'll go to DCTV, Dartmouth Week, The Chronicle. So we'll make sure that we get it all out there. In addition, there will still be Precinct Four at the same polling place. So if someone unfortunately goes to the Bible church again, um, they will be directed to the university.
Okay, is the university going to be posting anything on their, um, screenshots that they have throughout the school?
Correct.
Could you give a little detail on what you know what they're going to be doing? Let people know out there, if you, whatever you might know.
Sure. So I met with them last week and I looked at the space again. We talked about how we were going to set it up. And they have their own system and they have a crawl on their television or closed captioning system. So they will be putting it there and they're also going to be sharing it with the residents, um, the students to help make sure that they know where they're voting. And then I will take care of the piece in town to make sure that everybody is well-informed. In addition, on our website is a link and it's for all registered voters. If they go there, the secretary's website, you put in your address, it tells you exactly where to vote. So you're not trying to figure it out on a precinct map. It tells you the address and exactly where you'll be voting and that's for everyone. And they can always call the town clerk's office and we will look it up for people.
Where exactly UMass is the polling location?
So you would be parking in Parking Lot Five. Um, and I actually spoke with them, you had had a concern about permitted parking. There will be no permitted parking in that parking lot for all of voting. So it's precinct, uh, I'm sorry, it's Parking Lot Five. They'll follow the walkway and it's the building directly in front of them on the second floor there. I have ordered many more signs so that there will be in excess of signs throughout. Um, I don't want anybody to wonder. I'm sorry?
It's the campus center?
So it is, it's called Marketplace North.
Okay.
Um, and it's on the second floor. We will have, um, signs when you come into the university, we will have signs at the outside of the parking lot. At all of the walkways so that people know, and then when you get to the end of the walkway, you have to take a left. I will have signage there, I will have signage on the doors. When you walk in, you can either take the stairs to the second floor, if you take the elevator, you come out directly into the space that has just been redone. Um, and we are, everybody knows that we're coming on campus. In addition to, um, campus safety will know that we're coming. So they're really excited to host us and I think it'll be a really good turnout.
I was involved in the committee, uh, last year, involved in the kids, the students, they're really interested in putting this together and I think it's a great thing we're doing to try to. Especially now it can lead up to the national election in a couple of years too, but.
Right, and they'll still be hosting our local election.
Yep.
Um, because that was part of the deal is we don't want to be moving it. We don't want people to be confused about where they need to get out and vote. So, but they are really excited to host us, not just the officials, but the person that is my point person, he's a student there and he's been phenomenal. Um, he's worked really, really hard. He worked over the summer to make sure that he was in touch with me. Anything I've asked for, as far as communication and meeting, somebody has been available, um, to work with me. They would really like to partner with us on this and I know the UMass system is working hard to ensure that kids are getting registered to vote. And so anybody who wants to vote will have that opportunity. We have voting registration through the twenty-ninth of October at five PM. And our early voting begins next Saturday. We'll be open both Saturdays and then the two weeks, um, that the town hall is open during regular business hours, people can come here and vote. So if they don't want to vote at their regular polling place, whether that's on campus or anyplace else, we will be available to vote. And I think we're about five thousand mail-in ballots, um, right now. And we've mailed out sixty percent of those requests at this time, so we expect to have a hundred percent of our ballots mailed out by the end of the week. And people just need to have those back to us by eight PM, um, on November eighth. So there's lots of ways to, to be able to vote, so everybody should be getting out there.
We're on a mission to, uh, improve our whole relationship with the, with the, the campus and I think that's a great thing you're doing to help that process out.
They've been wonderful and it's not a real tax on, on the town. It's not actually costing us anything, um, more. And hopefully the benefits will be that more kids can get out and vote easily and be civically engaged, because that's what our hope is overall. They're going to staff their own polling precinct, so we will have some young people doing that at the university. And so I think that hopefully we'll get more people interested and involved. They're having their own poll worker training that I'll be hosting for them, so. I think it's going to be a good partnership. I'm excited.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Anybody else? Okay.
Motion, do we approve the warrant for the two thousand and twenty-two state election on November eighth?
I will second that.
Any comments or questions? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. And we are going to sign that. Next, Veterans Day update. Oh, here he comes.
Matthew.
Evening, board members. How are we doing tonight? All right, uh, you know, fall is here, so we have a couple of, uh, Veterans events coming up on first, on the fourth of November. The Friends of the Elderly and Representative Marky are going to be hosting the annual luncheon. Rachel is at the lakeside. That will be at eleven-thirty on the fourth. If you are a veteran, spouse of a veteran, or this year we're opening it up to widows, uh, you can contact the Friends of the Elderly at five oh eight, uh, nine 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 four seven one seven and ask for Maria Connor. Also, on the eleventh of November, we'll have our Veterans Day event, um, at the Memorial Grove, where this year the advisory board will be unveiling a granite bench, um, dedicated to the Dartmouth female veterans to go alongside the other benches at the Memorial Grove. Also, I might add, for the event on the fourth, very excited, we have, um, Commander Billy J. Farrell. She's the first woman to take command of the USS Constitution as a guest speaker there. So, um, again, back to the Veterans Day event, uh, that will be at eleven o'clock at the Memorial, uh, Memorial Grove, uh, located at the Council on Aging. We'll have light refreshments served afterwards and members of the community, uh, can contact my office with any questions.
So, um, for the fourth, I think we should have, uh, Mr. McGinnis have a citation for that, uh, speaker, we can give her a citation.
Absolutely. We have some other veterans coming as well. In fact, we have a, um, uh, for the unveiling of the bench, we have a ninety, she's ninety-one years old, she was in the Korean conflict. She'll be there, she's not front and center. Um, she lives at the cottages. Uh, I do my veterans corner there. Uh, it's a great, it's a great visit every month, so.
So we'll send, we'll, I'll bring that up to the, I'll bring that to the.
Do you have any questions about other one of those events, folks?
Anybody else, any questions?
Excellent. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, our Human Resources Department update.
Good evening. Um, thank you for having me here tonight. Um, as the town's personnel administrator, I was asked by Sean to provide a brief HR update regarding the accomplishments and efforts I've made since I started here in July. By way of background, the HR department provides services around recruitment, um, benefits, compensation, training, and employee and labor relations. So I wanted to give you an update regarding those different functions. The first, first thing I wanted to advise you on, and I should, I should tell you, there is a, um, a handout in your packet that you can follow. I wanted to advise you that we are in the process of conducting an HR operations assessment. One of the first things I did was I met with all department heads when I got hired, shortly after I got hired. And really what I did was I assessed the HR needs of the department, um, and then how we could provide better HR services to those different departments. Another thing we've done is we've relocated our HR office, so it's more accessible to the public and to our staff. So we're now on the third floor. With the goal of providing more efficient services, we started utilizing the skillsets of our existing staff to expand roles and responsibilities. So, um, right now I'm in the process of training our HR benefits clerk on more complex HR processes and I must say she's doing an outstanding job. Also, what we're doing is we're leveraging existing staff skillsets and decentralizing some of our HR processes. In the short time I've been here, I have to say that, um, we have great talented employees and what we want to do is really utilize the skillsets that they have. Another thing we're doing is, um, evaluating the HR module in Munus, which is our, uh, financial software package. So the module is designed to just streamline all HR, uh, processes in one central location. So that means applicant tracking, recruitment, onboarding, payroll, benefits, all of these things would be located in one central place. So I look forward to being able to further evaluate that and implement it in the future. In terms of policies and procedures, Sean and I recently reviewed the Personnel Bylaw and we've initiated a complete update, um, to be in line with HR best practices. So stay tuned for that. Um, we also, I'm working on updating the recruitment and onboarding procedures. So from a recruitment perspective, what we're trying to do is hire the most talented individuals, but we want to do it in a, as quick as possible, um, you know, in, in order to fill those positions. So keeping in mind that we want to fill them quickly, we streamlined the application and interview process and we've also just, uh, decentralized the interview process where appropriate. And then as for onboarding, studies have shown that the first thirty to ninety days of employment is critical when it comes to retention, um, and engagement. So I've designed a onboarding program for our new hires, just to welcome them and better acclimate them into the position in the town. Also, for reference, I wanted to let you know, we have hired and onboarded eighteen new hires since I started here in July. Um, and there's also been ten promotions and transfers that, um, have occurred since I started. Also, in ver, in terms of employee and labor relations, I am a member of the town's collective bargaining team. Um, I'm responsible for assisting with drafting MOAs and MOUs for the collective bargaining units. And I also evaluate reclassification requests for collective bargaining units, so I've, I've conducted a few of those. And then I work with individual staffs on implementing progressive discipline measures. Also pleased to advise you that, um, we applied for and were awarded two community compact best practice grants for a total of a hundred thousand dollars. The first fifty thousand will be used to explore centralized HR operations to improve service delivery and build efficiencies. Uh, and then also, um, another grant for fifty thousand was to update John description so that we can more clearly define rules and expectations. In the area of benefits, I'm on an internal team that evaluate, is currently evaluating the health insurance benefit structures in order to provide more economical cost to employees. We're also reviewing the health and benefit plan rates, uh, with Maya, who's our health insurance administrator. And we're getting ready to plan a employee benefits and wellness fair for this spring. It's going to be a large fair and what I really want to do is make sure we're showcasing the benefits that we have to offer and also informing and educating our employees on those benefits.
Don't forget my mail.
Also wanted to note, I thought this was important, um, our office is responsible for processing all the benefits for the school department. So, um, we've had, they've had thirty-five new hires year-to-date, so that does take up a considerable amount of our time. So I just wanted you to be aware of that. And then lastly, um, for training purposes, I have researched and coordinated a six-session management training program for department heads. This is going to focus on communication, conflict resolution, planning, organizing, and performance management. Um, I'm in the process of applying for a Maya wellness grant, um, to cover the cost of that training, so.
Nice.
So that's what I've been up to. Does anybody have any questions?
Easy lady.
Yes.
Well, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
All those positions, uh, not new positions, they're existing or unfilled?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And I also had a question on the, the Munus, um, module.
Yes.
That's, that's part of our overall, um, Munus package, but you adding a module we didn't have before, which.
That's correct.
It's all.
Right.
So we're making better use of what we have.
Yes, um, we have a meeting coming up in the next few weeks, so I'm looking forward to learning more about and evaluating that module.
Well, I, I think that, personally, I think that when we went out shopping for you, uh, we wanted to put ourselves in the HR business as opposed to the, the payroll business. And I think that we've, we've hit the ground running because it's critically important. We were at a presentation today at New Bedford Volk and everybody talked about the sanding as far as benefits are concerned, health benefits, health benefits and health benefits.
Right.
I know that's a, a priority for you as well, to try to do the best we can to find out what we can offer in the best way possible, whatever that is.
Right.
You're going to dig deep for that one, so.
Yes.
People should know that as well. So thank you. Anybody else?
I would just, oh, Sean?
Go ahead.
Please go ahead. Thank you. Um, I just wanted to say that, that hearing this plan, um, makes the department proactive instead of being reactionary, which sometimes HRs can be.
Right.
Reacting to a problem. Certainly what you're laying out today, um, tonight is what you've done and what you're looking to do is creating a department that anticipating.
Right.
And, um, supporting the staff before there's a crisis.
Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. McDonald?
Well, as part of, I guess, the old timers that were here when HR first started up and part of also the old personnel board, you can start seeing the progression. And we wanted the, the predestined HR before you to do a little bit more, to get more involved. And, um, I think it became a monumental task to, to get that extra. I am absolutely, totally pleased to see that the extra has actually gone beyond.
Thank you.
This is something that this town surely lacked in the way of dealing with its personnel. And if we can make the hiring process easier, the administration process easier, the managerial process easier, easier. And to make the employees feel that they are valued, that they're wanted, that they're not coerced into doing things, that they're not bullied into doing things. That, I think, is, is tantamount to making sure that we provide the best services to our residents, because a lot of our employees are also our residents.
Right.
So they do better, we do better, everybody does better. And I just, I'm just, I'm looking forward to seeing what happens in the next eight months. I really do. I, I, I have an idea what I will see for your year review in front of us. Not to put much pressure on it, but I know it's going to be four times better than today.
Thank you.
Bless you.
Very much.
No, I also think I would add that we, we've made it a point as a board where the critical areas of the most needed hires are, and I think that message has been well received as well, because we need some people in certain areas that are critical. That's a real good thing for the town as well. Anybody else?
Great job.
Thank you.
McGinnis?
Uh, no, I mean Denise, we've worked closely together since she started. You know, she brings a, a wealth of experience, she's worked in other communities, so it's nice to have a fresh perspective come in to say, you know, you think you're doing this well and you are, but these things you can improve on. So she's really been instrumental in that regard and that's the whole streamlining, the onboarding and the application process. And, um, you know, we talk a lot about developing internal staff and she's, you know, this is her experience as well, so you can see what she's done with her staff member in her department. She's really stepped up and done quite a bit, so Melissa Jerome's been great. So, um, yeah, I mean, I, nothing but good things to say about Denise so far. She's been a real asset to the town.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Battleship Harley Davidson. Next, we have Battleship Harley Davidson Traffic Safety Review. Mr. McGinnis?
Yes, so at the previous Select Board meeting, the owner and manager of Battleship Harley Davidson were present before the board to talk about some issues they had their previous events, along with the police chief and the safety officers. At that meeting, it was agreed by the board that the Battleship Harley Davidson would work with the police department on their safety plan, and if they had an agreement on the safety plan, they did not have to be present, that you, the board, just wanted a note or a letter from the chief saying that they had come to an agreement on a safety plan that was approved by the police department, which they have. That is in your packet, so they are approved and ready to go.
Kudos to Mr. McDonald for bringing this issue to the top, because we could avoid it. Catastrophe had not been so designated, so thank you.
And it certainly sounds like, from the letter received from the chief, that there will be detail offices there.
Well, this will be their last chance.
Well, no, a chief wouldn't write unless he's going to have things.
Well, this is the last event.
Okay, anybody have any comments on that one? Anybody else on that? Okay, great. Thank you, chief, wherever you are. Okay, now we move on to the fastest-formulated committee in my personal history of the town of Dartmouth. We've come a long way in a short time, and the Dartmouth Tree Committee Charge. Mr. McGinnis?
Yes, so at a previous committing, the proposed Dartmouth Tree Committee was before you with a draft charge that they had put together. In the conversation with the board, it was agreed that the town would use that as a foundation, but also draft it in line with other committee charges the town has. So, in the packet with the board is the draft committee charge, which the board can review with the proposed Dartmouth Tree Committee. And if the board comes to an agreement on this draft committee charge, what I would recommend is that the board solicit letters of interest. I know there's some interest with the board, so that, this is a process we follow with all the boards and committees, and I think there's plenty of room for many people on the committee. And then, at the next meeting, the board would appoint the committee members.
I think it's appropriate that, it's a short, there's a lot of people interested in this, and I think maybe if I could read this through, I think people should hear it out in the public. If it's okay. The general purpose of the Dartmouth Tree Committee is charged, the committee is charged with promoting the protection, planting, and care of trees in forests, as well as to raise awareness of the many benefits that trees provide to the Dartmouth community. Specific charges: The committee will work with Dartmouth's Department of Public Works and tree warden, the Conservation Commission, the Planning Board, the town administrator, to disseminate important information about trees, to encourage residents and business to protect trees and plant trees, and to assist in managing and approving Dartmouth's tree canopy. The committee will establish and maintain a webpage on the town's website to provide this information to the public. I know this is a draft, but.
Sounds perfect.
It's good. That's a couple of good words I like to hear. Okay. And obviously, report to the Select Board as, hopefully, a quarterly or more as needed basis, so. I think it's a great draft. It was done well and quickly, and it certainly addressed an issue that came up on fire. Any comments? Membership, keep going. Okay. The Dartmouth Tree Committee shall consist of as many as seven members. They shall include the DPW director, who's the tree warden, and five at-large members of the community appointed by the Select Board. At-large committee members shall serve a one, serve one three-year term. Meetings to be called as needed, with such meetings to be in public space, excuse me, in a public place with appropriate posting under the open meeting law. Congratulations on that one. And the committee shall follow Robert rules of order. The open meeting laws are, you got to follow.
And where do we meet, then?
Oh, you'll get them.
Oh, yeah. You'll get plenty of people.
Question?
Yes, Ms. McDonald?
Since the DPW director is also the tree warden, he won't have two votes on that committee, will he? Because if not, then we only have, we only have six members of the committee. We need to either change the number of at-large to six.
Do we ever think that?
So that we have a total of seven?
Well, we can also say just the tree warden.
Or the tree warden is an ex officio, an advisory. And we either have five or seven members.
I think we came to you with five anyway, so.
Because one of the things I like to do is I like to have as wide of.
The town?
Yes.
Representing the entire town?
So that, you know, you have somebody here, somebody there, somebody here, somebody there. You know, try to make it as.
Professional.
Democratic.
No, not professional. Try to make it as specific as the town is, you know.
Northeast, southwest.
Yeah, north, south, east, west, center.
Geographic.
You'll get plenty of people.
We do want an odd number of members.
Yeah, so.
In keeping with our other boards.
Oh.
I would, okay, so I would make the motion that the membership reads the following. The Dartmouth Tree Committee shall consist of seven, of five members. They shall include the DPW director, tree warden as ex officio, and five at-large members of the community, and blah, 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 the rest are the same.
You'll ask me on that, because the tree warden and the DPW director, right now, are the same person.
Same person.
So, that's one.
Right.
So, one plus five? Six.
I would, no matter, all right.
Is that what you're?
What I would like to see is the DPW director, who is also the tree warden, as an ex officio. If the tree warden ever becomes separate from the DPW, then we'll have two ex officio members of the committee as advisory.
So, nonvoting?
Nonvoting, ex officio, yeah.
Well, this would be more clear if it said DPW director, who is the tree warden.
Or you can just say, well, you can just say DPW director, tree warden, as ex officio members. If it's the same person, it's the same person. You have one ex officio versus two ex officios.
Yeah.
Or ex officiae, whatever the hell you want to call it, squid, squid.
Five members and one ex officio member.
Yeah.
Sound okay?
We still have to have, and five is the magic number, right?
We've got five full part of the board, and then we have about ten others who are part of what we call the advisory board.
It'd be five voting members.
They'd be more, they'd be more than welcome to sit in in any of your meetings and talk to you.
Nonvoting members.
But they'll be nonvoting and, you know.
Okay.
You know, they'll be citizens' participation input, not advisory.
Yeah.
Can these members serve more than one term?
You know, we began.
It doesn't say that.
No, it just says, serve one year.
Actually, almost going to be two years ago in June. So, I was thinking term limits of two to three years for some of us.
So, in here, we have three years. And so, I would recommend that when we do the appointments, that we appoint someone for a one-year. Some, two for a two, two for a three, and then we'll get that rolling in those.
It'd be two, two for a three, two for a two, one for a one. And then, at any time, if somebody wants to sit down and not go anymore, and we'll have somebody move up, then they're more than welcome to say, I do not wish to, you know.
But this language says, this language says one three-year term. Do we want to have possible repeats if they want to continue?
What do you think?
Well, they will be staggered. They will be staggered.
Be staggered anyway.
Serving one three-year term sounds like you cannot serve more than one term.
That's what it says here.
Can you change that a little bit and leave it up to the individual?
So, you say each member, each at-large member shall serve a three-year term with, with.
I think you don't have to say after. If you remove the one, a three-year term.
Yeah, okay.
They can always.
I take care of it.
A three-year term. Well, that one caused a lot of problems.
Are we all confused?
Do I come back in front of you to go over this more?
No, you would come back if you would like to be appointed as one of those five.
Okay, at the next meeting?
We'll let you know.
Okay.
If we get it on the, it'll only be, if we can fit it on the agenda, but yes.
Okay. I want to make sure that language, I thought it was one to three, but now you're just saying three years, or?
Well, the thing is, is that you want to have some kind of continuity on the board.
Yep.
So, if everybody is appointed to a three-year term, every three years, you're appointing five people. So, this way, you appoint two for three, two for three, one for three.
Yep.
And then, you go, or, actually, it's two for two, two for three, two for two, and one for one.
Okay, one for one.
So, the one, the one person gets the one, opts for renewal next year, then they get a three after that.
Good.
So, that way, there's always, it's just like us, okay?
Staggered.
Staggered.
Right, it's all staggered. So, that way, there's a continuity. So, you'll always have four or three people who are on the board multiple years when either one or two new people go on.
It's perfect.
Yeah, we have one, a one, and then we have two. Like, I'm coming up in April.
Okay.
Only one person's running for reelection.
Right, he's got lot one.
So, the rest of the lots are, there are two people.
Right.
There'll be two individuals running for each of the lots.
And we've left it open. If someone wants to do another term, if they move, they can. Okay. I think we did a good job on that one. Do you have any other questions or comments?
Yeah, we're really keen to get our website up, because we've got all sorts of, we've got a lot of subcommittees and people working on things. I had a wonderful meeting with Tim Barber about our initiatives, and he said yes to every single one, so we're excited. And that website is really going to be key for us to launch. So, I'm just wondering how we can go forward with that, too.
Well, once the committee gets established, then you can meet with Mike Corville, our MIS guy, and then you can, we can talk about getting the links on the page and get your own page.
Contact Mr. McGinnis, and he'll put you in touch.
You can contact my office, and we'll get you set up. We're in the process of updating the website.
After the next one?
Well, we need to, we need to have the membership first, and then we need to.
Right.
Okay. Thank you very much.
We need to make, establish the committee, which we're going to do tonight, and then, we're going to advertise for positions, and then make the appointments to the committee, and then you can grow from there.
But we can, they can get started on the website in the meantime, after tonight.
Oh, can we?
Not you. It'll tap in through.
My guys can do that.
I've got the material.
Contact Mr. McGinnis if we want to get started.
I've actually done out all the material for the three columns, and it's sort of, it's just like the committee, the commission, Conservation Commission page, very similar.
Yeah, what we'll do is we'll have you come in, and we'll show you how to update the website, your page. You just have access to the page.
Great.
And then, we'll work with you on that.
All right.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Your office, that also gives them the.
Yes, we'll set them up.
Conduct.
And then, once you're appointed by the board, you'll get a letter from this office that you have to go to the clerk's office and be sworn in.
Okay.
That's when you need a big briefcase for that one.
Just, yeah, one other question was about the account, funding account, and we talked to Tim about this, so, and he mentioned meeting with Christine O'Grady. So, we're recommending that the town set up a tree fund, basically for incoming funds from three different, from, actually, we hope to raise funds. We hope to raise them from, well, like, there was a situation in town that the town got six thousand dollars because of the public trees that were cut down. That money will come in, and then donations. And this is aside from tree maintenance that remains in some other place. So, we have monies coming in, and we hope to eventually ask the town for some money, too, to spend on planting trees and money going out. So, this would be a separate line item that doesn't exist probably, but it would be a tree fund.
What'll happen is after the committee is set up, you'll probably, and the committee is, becomes official after you get all your bells and whistles from the town clerks, you hold your first meeting. Who's your chair? Who's your vice chair? And then, you can set up a meeting with Mr. McGinnis, Mr. Haddad, and Mr. Carrero.
Okay.
To talk about setting up a separate fund, maybe a stab fund, tree stab fund, or whatever you want to call it, because eventually, you'll have, we're in the process now of starting, well, actually, next month and the month after that, start developing the budget for 2024. But it's a good time, because then you can start talking about that and getting it ready, which you'll end up having to go, they'll end up going through it, reviewing it, coming up with it. Then, you'll be going before the Finance Committee, and then it's going to be, no matter what happens, it's all going to go to a town meeting in June.
Okay.
So, it's at a good time where everything can get done, and then, come July 1st, if the town meeting approves it, there you have your walking.
The other source of funds, we have experts in town to find us some grants as well.
Oh, good. That's very important.
He'll be in the meeting, so he's running right over there, so.
The guy in the tie.
That's Cody.
I also just wanted to give a point of information. The last time the tree committee was here, pre-tree committee was here, we talked about how the town used to provide trees. Well, did a little more homework, Mr. McDonald, and the trees that are, that you drive by near Crapo Field on that hill, the trees there were available to townspeople in the sixties. If you built a house, you could go by and pick out two trees, and the trees were in their ball, and the family could go, pick out two trees. The two trees would then be planted in their yard. And the trees on that hill are the trees that were left over at the end of that initiative.
That would be cool to revive that.
My mother-in-law still has her two trees.
That's a wonderful story. Thank you for that. I tried to.
As usual, Mrs. Brooks comes up with another nugget of Dartmouth history and.
You.
Thank you, Mrs. Brooks.
You have to sign up on our Facebook page. You haven't done that yet.
Oh, okay.
All of you, actually. It's really exciting Facebook page.
Great.
Oh, you are. I know you are, Sean. Sorry.
He's Mr. Facebook, yeah.
So, we wait until we hear from someone.
I'm doing it right now.
Yes.
Okay.
So, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the draft with.
With changes.
With changes, as discussed, and to form the Dartmouth Tree Committee.
One second. Any questions or discussions before we vote? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Hearing none? Unanimous. Thank you very much for participating, helping us out. It's going to be great for the town.
Oh, thank you all very much. It means a lot to us.
My membership's pending.
It's exciting. Yes.
We're going to be like, our old planning director putting in tropical trees that didn't grow that quickly and didn't.
No, no, it's, no, 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 we're not going to get.
Not going backwards, going forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you very much.
We'll leave that subject alone.
Sure. Fuel assistance guidelines approval. Cody Haddad, here he is.
Yes, good evening, so.
Pen writer.
So, this year, we once again received a fuel assistance grant from the State Attorney General's Office. We have had overwhelming interest in the program. We've opened the application. It's been open for about a month now, and we've received over two hundred applicants. In past years, we received twenty to thirty. This year, the program has been expanded. It was previously only natural gas, and now it's all heating types. So, with that being said, we do only have ten thousand dollars to administer, so we have to put forward a criteria. So, you'll see, I presented a criteria. There's really three different priority groups. The first is those with incomes between sixty and eighty percent of the state median income. The reason we have that as the first priority is that's a requirement of the state for this grant. And the idea with that being that it reaches the people who wouldn't typically qualify for traditional assistance. So, if you make less than sixty percent of the state median income, you qualify for traditional fuel assistance. So, this kind of gets to that gap of those who wouldn't typically qualify. And those in the lower portion of that would receive three hundred dollars. Those in the higher portion of that would receive two hundred dollars. The second priority group is for those making, with an income between one hundred and two hundred percent of the federal poverty level, so kind of the lower end. So, they would typically get traditional fuel assistance. But with increased energy costs this winter, we feel that this would be beneficial to those individuals. And the same formula here, those with the lower portion would receive three hundred dollars. Those with the higher portion would receive two hundred dollars. And then, that third priority group, if we have any funding left over, would just be based off solely income, lowest to highest, would receive a two hundred dollar award. But I don't necessarily anticipate we'll get past the first priority groups looking at the applicants. It's been overwhelming.
It's incredible.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's a great program. We started running this two years ago through the Attorney General's Office. Initially, it was part of a settlement from the natural gas explosions that the Attorney General's Office was able to get, and they administered it to the communities. And just with the need, they were able to expand it, and we were able to apply successfully to continue the program. We were awarded ten thousand dollars this year and another ten thousand dollars for next year.
Okay.
Great. Okay. Any questions, anybody?
Nope.
Doesn't require? Doesn't require a vote or a comment?
It does.
It does require a vote, okay, like I said, it requires a vote, right?
Yes.
I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I hear none?
Very good.
Thank you for working this, Cody. Okay. Now we go to the amendment to warrant for capital skid steer. One of my favorite machines, yeah.
Well, I'll get you going, and Gary can kind of fill in the gaps.
Do we have one coming through the...
So is this happening tomorrow?
Yeah, so what happened on the warrant that was approved, there was a Scribner's error, according to our process, is it? So I'll let Gary kind of continue with what, so one of the items is, the number is incorrect. The correct amount was voted by the Capitol Planning Committee, but we didn't put the correct dollar amount on the warrant, so Gary can kind of...
Right, so when CIPC voted this back a couple months ago, and then, then we did the warrant up, in the schedule that we looked at, we, the team looked at an amount that was just half of the skid steer, so the total amount is 47,500 times two, and in the original warrant, we had 47,500, so that needs to be updated, that needs to be updated. We can only buy half the skid steer with half of the funds, so, and they desperately needed, I talked to the DPW, instructions division.
Yeah.
Right.
The, the cost is split between two entities within DPW, so when we, when we split it, the split was supposed to be 43,750 per entity, and we split the 43,750, so it was 21...
I'll make a motion that we make this, an amended motion to the article come tomorrow night.
Article six.
Article six.
I'll second that.
Second, comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none? It passes.
David, you want to make sure you make a hold on the, when it comes time for this, please?
Right.
Yeah, we've got the draft, well, this is the final, from Town Council.
Yep.
We put it together, so that'll be, I guess that'll be...
Yeah, give that to the town moderator before the meeting, that way she has it.
Is that something that the town meeting members will pick up at the table?
No, David, we'll read it tomorrow, so we just like to approve the amendment that's going to be presented tomorrow.
Okay. All set? Thank you, Gary, nice job.
Okay.
Okay, moving along, town administrator update.
Yes, well, some of it you've heard already tonight, so town meeting, obviously tomorrow at 7:00 PM at the high school on Bakersfield Road, that we talked about...
In person?
In person, yes, which is very nice to be back in person. I don't think we've been back in person at the high school, have we?
No, no.
So this is our first time back, so hopefully we remember where to sit. We have the amendment to Article Six, you read that. Under financial, we received our second opioid settlement check for $42,260.34. We expect to have more of these this year, so this check came in too late to be incorporated into the warrant, so we'll have it at Springtown Meeting to be moved to the stabilization fund for the opioid settlement, if approved. Denise had mentioned that we're working with Maya on our health programs, you know, we really do look at all the health and benefits that the town offers and what we can do to provide better benefits and more cost-effective benefits to the employees. Some of the programs that Maya offers is a smart shopper program that pays employees to go to different facilities for routine examinations, like an MRI, if they go to a facility that Blue Cross will reschedule, they'll get, they get a reimbursement back in cash. There's also a number of wellness grants that we're looking to take advantage of to provide services and, and training to the employees, and they also have a new, a lot of online mental health services that they're promoting, and we'll be promoting those as part of the Wellness Fair, so there's a lot going on, it's really just a matter of us educating the employees and informing them on what programs are offered by Maya, because they are a lot, everyone is really making an effort, we realize healthcare is expensive, but there are some things that are doing, so we're really trying to get the employees to take advantage of them, so. We continue to review park and rec operations and staffing, as well as DPW operations and staffing, we've had some productive meetings, and we've worked with both department heads, Tim Lancaster and Tim Barber, and also Cody and Denise have all been involved in kind of starting to do an assessment. And last, we'll, you know, this is more an internal thing, but just to let the board know, we'll be having a town employee meeting on the 25th for all town employees that are not department heads, just to really hear from the employees and update them on what's going on, just like we update you, to make sure that they know what's going on in town from small to large projects, and to hear from them what they're hearing out there in the community, so we can pass that along, so that's, we'll be on the 25th.
What time is that and where?
That's here in Town Hall, and there's two times, a morning and afternoon session.
Fit in this room?
Uh, we're going to fit them in this room, yes. And that's it, that's all I have.
Okay, old business, Mr. McGinnis?
Yes, no new updates, sorry, I'm trying to pull that up here. Bliss Corner, no new updates, like, the municipal broadband, no new updates, other than we're preparing the RFP for the study that was funded, if it's funded tomorrow on the Capitol Plan.
Okay, we have minutes to approve. Can we do them both at the same time, or do they have comments on one individual?
I have a question.
Good.
On Sept, on the September 12th, we had a pretty lengthy discussion about our concerns on the Clarks Cove notification, and I was wondering if the letter that we spoke about that night has in fact gone out.
I'll double, I'll double check on that.
Okay.
We did send that out, but I will double check.
Okay.
Are we in a position to approve one or both together?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of September 12th and September 19th, 2022.
Second.
Thank you, a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Minutes are approved. Select Board members, have any updates or information they want to share? Mr. McDonald?
Yes, just asking Mr. Haddad and Mr. McGinnis where we are on the RFP review of the McBride Posse.
Yes, so we've, we've reviewed the, once in the middle we have, we are seeking more information, that letter's going out this week to the one respondent, just to get some clarification and some more information.
Okay, because I know we were, the timeline was, we were supposed to look at it, and I guess get it for approval sometime this month, correct? Is that still...
Yeah, we're still trying, it'll probably be in November, depending on, you know, when we get the information back, but, yes.
Anything else, Mr. McDonald?
No, I think I'm good, believe it or not.
I would just like to emphasize a couple of things, one is, you're going to be, and I tend to mention this at each meeting, because I think it's critically important, we are putting together a series of workshops that are different than we've done in the past, and it's designed to work with our boards and committees to help us improve the, the system, to try to get perspective, and to share some ideas that maybe will end up in a more efficient use of, of everybody's time. And we're putting together a calendar going forward and give it a try, which we'll be announcing soon, and then we'll try to, and pigeon that whole that back into, into January as well. So I look forward to that, we've had some good discussions about it already, and I look forward to, to keeping that process alive and well. I also would like to read this announcement from St. Peter's Episcopal Church presents Swords to Plowshares, Transforming Guns Into Garden Tools. November 6th, at the 351 Elm Street facility at the church, hands-on participation at the forge and anvil, creating gardening tools and jewelry from guns voluntarily turned in. Family-friendly and interactive, all are welcome. November 6th, at the church, St. Peter's, in Payden Air Village, at, there's a service at 10:00 AM, and then the, the actual activity begins at 11:30. Fascinating project, to say the least.
Yeah, it is.
Anybody else have something to say?